I like it. All right, shall we? You ready?
Yes.
Good evening and welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for April 10, 2017. Could we have the roll, please?
Mr. Robinson.
Here.
Mr. Spring.
Here.
Mr. Walker.
Present.
Mr. Spohays.
Here.
Mr. Spinelli.
Here.
Ms. Bailey.
Here.
Ms. Barker.
Here.
Mr. Strite.
Here.
Mr. Looney.
Here.
Thank you.
Good job. All right, there are no minutes. Special order of business, any disclosures, Mr. Walker.
None.
Ms. Bailey.
I did have someone from the public call me up on my work phone number and try to talk to me about the land use plan, but I mentioned that we were still in discussion. So I just had the, I sent them to the planning staff to address their comments through them instead of through me.
Great, thanks. Ms. Bailey. Mr. Looney.
None.
Mr. Strite.
None.
Mr. Spring.
I was not present for the meeting in which the Resolution 2017-015 was developed, so I'll abstain.
Great, thank you. Mr. Spinelli.
None.
It's Barker.
Nothing.
Mr. Spohays.
None.
And I have none. Next up, there's an information item, technical amendments to AMC 2105-10E and 2105-06OD. Are there any questions of staff for the technical amendments? Go ahead, Mr. Spring.
Just like a description of what it involves. I haven't really had a chance to look at it.
Thank you, Mr. Spring, or through the chair. The Port of Anchorage is ready to sign contracts with three different companies to build fuel tanks within the Port of Anchorage security area, which I guess is a federally defined area. It's not the whole, like, port area, it's the specific behind security in the Port of Anchorage. And under old code, a fuel tank would have been a permitted use. It would be by right. They'd need a building permit, but in terms of zoning code, it was just a by right use. But in the new code, the new code says that bulk storage hazardous material, fuel tanks, are required to obtain a conditional use permit and are required to be separated from residential districts, schools, churches, and hospitals. Schools, church? I'm sorry, yes, and parks, yeah. Schools, hospitals, parks. The churches one is not correct. I'm confusing it with alcohol, I apologize. But those other ones, and residential districts, it's required to be separated by 1,000 feet. And when you look at some of the maps that we've prepared for you in the back of this sheet, the, all of the fuel tanks at the port are within the 1,000 feet radius from Government Hill neighborhood. And so the ordinance that we prepared changes what the new code says for the Port of Anchorage and this requirement, 1,000-foot separation and a conditional use permit. 1,000-foot separation would require a zoning variance, right, to reduce that separation? It drops the 1,000-foot requirement altogether, and it reduces the conditional use permit requirement from, well, from a conditional use to an administrative site plan review by the planning department with two, two new standards of approval to evaluate the public health hazards and the disruption of views from the Government Hill neighborhood of the inlet and the mountains.
May I follow, please?
Yeah, go ahead.
So you're asking, this is going to be expedited then as a, under the standards that allow that to be done through the Assembly? Is this really an oversight from the writing of the Title 21, or is it an actual change? I mean, wouldn't you think Government Hill residents would maybe want to comment on this, since it affects their neighborhood?
Yes, Mr. Spring, the department has determined that this is an unintended consequence of the new code, that the proximity of the Port of Anchorage and these, these fuel tanks to the Government Hill neighborhood and the 1,000-foot requirement. Had that been known, that we would have known there was a problem then. Of course, we need to support our industrial areas, especially in the Port of Anchorage. It has statewide impacts. But I just got off the phone with members of the Government Hill neighborhood community council, and I'll be speaking to them at their April 20 meeting. This ordinance will be introduced to the Assembly on April 24, and then May 23 will be the public hearing, if that's what the Assembly decides to do. So I'm going to be going to the community council, and we've spoken with them twice, leadership of some of the members.
And so what was their feedback, then?
Well, the first meeting generated the ordinance before you, where they said, "Well, our major concerns will be, you know, retaining our views and whether or not this is dangerous," you know, "you know, public health and safety." And so that's why we've added the new, two new conditions of approval. So, mind you, 15 months ago, this was all a permitted by right use, but, you know, since the effect of the new code, and this is the first project to build fuel storage tanks or remodel existing ones, right, to upgrade them for safety reasons. I'll also make another point that I wrote in the memo here, is that I couldn't find another city that restricted fuel tanks, that restricted fuel tanks in any way in the zoning code. So when I called Boulder, Colorado, and Asheville, North Carolina, Portland, Seattle, Juneau, Tacoma, when I called all of these cities, they all said that it was a permitted use, by right use in the zoning code. None of them had any restrictions. Interestingly, this, you know, Portland was the only one that had a restriction, which was, is a part of their anti, their sustainability and anti-global warming, or global climate change initiatives. They passed an ordinance that there'll be no new fuel tanks constructed in the city. But that is not about a, like, a life safety thing, it was just about their interest in, yeah.
I guess, I'm not sure it's really an unintended consequence. I mean, I'm not necessarily disagree with the change, but, I mean, how could we not know that this would affect the Port of Anchorage storage? I, how would we not know that when we adopt the ordinance? I mean...
Well, I'd just add, to, you know, make another point, if, if this ordinance is not approved, then this Crowley company that wants to build a fuel tank, they will have to obtain approval for a zoning variance to reduce the separation distance and then apply, afterwards, apply for a conditional use permit. You know, the, a discretionary review of this kind just puts the kibosh on the project altogether, because these companies won't, won't come if, they, they won't enter into a four-month conditional use process, added to that a four-month zoning variance process.
If I may, Mr., oh, go ahead, Mr. Strite.
Yeah, through the, through the chair. The port went through a major expansion to the north, and it was my understanding it was for a number of reasons, of which the ability to add additional storage tank facilities was one of. Yet we don't see anything being developed down there at that far end, probably because of the infrastructure it takes to link those, that area. That's, that's my recollection going backwards. But I think your mapping that you have here is actually, speaks for itself, that that 1,000-foot buffer, and correct me if I'm wrong, that 1,000-foot buffer clearly was a misstep, the unintended consequence, just by virtue of looking at the map. So your map speaks for itself.
Can, Mr. Strite, can you just, just clarify that, that comment? I'll just speak from experience, having attended an Assembly subcommittee, when this, when the topic of unintended consequences come up, the Assembly subcommittee did appreciate hearing that a determination had been made by the Planning Commission that it, in fact, met, you know, it met the definition of unintended consequence. I mean, they appreciated hearing, I think we did that on a mixed-use ordinance not too long ago, and them hearing that, I think, gave them some, some satisfaction that there was some concurrence there. So could you just, so is your point that because there are so many tanks within that 1,000-foot?
I, I don't think this was an unintended consequence, I think this was an oops. And I wasn't present during the Title 21 discussion on this particularly, that I recall, but if you look at the mapping, the mapping by default places it well within 1,000 feet. And so having verbiage that says there won't be anything within 1,000 feet is clearly a, we missed, somebody missed this one.
By the nature of the, how much infrastructure is already within that? Or there'd been, there would have been an explicit conversation about the fact that there would be no new infrastructure within that area?
Possibly, possibly, but that, I don't believe took place.
Okay, Mr. Spinelli.
I think that you could say the unintended consequence was that Title 21 basically made the port illegal. And I don't think it was the intended consequence of Title 21 to restructure the fuel storage facilities at the Port of Anchorage.
Where the...
That's my guess.
I'm going to go to Ms. Barker.
And I'll just add one more thing. At the final Assembly hearing where they adopted Title 21, the industry was there, several industry groups, saying that this code was not ready, and I think it was Pat Flynn said, "I'm tired of dealing with this, let's just adopt it and we'll hear about the problems when they come up."
Okay.
Should expect this to keep happening.
Thank you, Mr. Spinelli, Ms. Barker, then Mr. Strite.
Thank you. I mean, it would be one thing if the intent of the plan had been, intent of the code had been to enhance, you know, protection or separation of the Government Hill neighborhood from the existing port facility, but there was nothing in the Government Hill community plan that, the area plan there that reflects such a goal. Therefore, I'm inclined to agree that, yeah, this is, this is an oops.
Great, thank you, Ms. Barker. Mr. Strite.
Yes, thank you, and through the chair. To ensure that we don't have another oops, as I look at the map, this identifies 1,000-foot buffer to the north and northwest. Fair, fair statement?
Yeah.
Should we likewise be concerned to the Government Hill neighborhood to the south, to the railroad? Because quite frankly, I'd be more, if I were a resident in the Government Hill, I'd be more concerned about what's coming through in the tanks in the railroad than I am down in the tanks that, that are more regulated.
It's a very good point, Mr. Strite. The department wanted to tailor this as specifically as possible just to the port, but, you know, I think that we don't, I, for one, don't know a lot about the railroad and whether or not these use-specific standards have consequences for, for the rest of the rail yard. We just wanted to do as little change as possible to the code, but I don't have enough knowledge to be able to speak to how Title 21 use-specific standards may cause parts of the rail yard to also be non-conforming.
Is there any, and not that it's required, is there any motion from the body to, to find staff's proposal consistent with the unintended, as an unintended consequence? Mr. Walker?
So moved.
So the finding that, that this meets the, the provision of an unintended consequence?
Yeah, I believe, I'll, I mean, I'll speak to it, I agree with...
Seconded by Ms. Bailey, but, yeah, go ahead.
I agree with Commissioner Strite's comments. I think the picture speaks for itself. I mean, most of the tanks that are already existing are encompassed within that red 1,000-foot buffer. And I think by comparison, that when you figure Boulder and the People's Republic of Portland, neither of those two places actually has a rule similar to this. I think that by comparison, you know, we're, you know, I think we're a lot more conservative than those communities, and I think that's a pretty good indicator as well. So I, I think that this does meet the standard, and I'd be supporting this.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Mr. Spring.
I'm not going to be supporting the motion. I think we could add some value to this ordinance if we had a chance to have a public hearing on it. For instance, I think the conditional use requirement should remain here. They're proposing to change the conditional use requirement as administrative review. So there's going to be no public hearing now on any new, the separation distance, I would, I'd go along with that, removing that, but I'm not, I wouldn't go along with removing the requirement for a conditional use. So I'm not going to support that.
So, Mr. Spring, your comment is, this, this does two things. No, it still maintains the 1,000 feet, it accepts it, it makes an exception within the I-2 district, for the port specifically, yes?
Yes.
And then it also went under what normally, inside or outside that 1,000 feet, you would still have to go through a conditional use, correct?
The conditional use is reduced to an administrative site plan review with two new standards of approval, which are to evaluate the public health hazards and the view sheds from the Government Hill neighborhood.
So no other place, only in the, the port is the conditional use, move from a conditional use to administrative site plan approval?
Same with 1,000 foot. It's specifically only for the Port of Anchorage security area, which is depicted in your guys' maps.
And can I just ask, then, why is your, why is your belief that you ought to maintain conditional use for, for this in other, in other zoning districts?
Oh, well, I, you know, I don't have a defense on why...
I think your point is that would constitute more than an unintended consequence.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Walker, then Mr. Strite.
A question for the staff, and then a question for Commissioner Spring. So this would, basically, we would have administrative site plan review, under what, basically, your proposal includes administrative site plan review?
That's correct.
Okay. And then just to kind of, you know, hash this out, I'd like to speak to Commissioner Spring's comments. Are you suggesting, then, John, that if, that you think there should be a public hearing for every single fuel tank that gets built in the port? I guess I'm just wondering what, what that's going to mean, because in my mind, we, we need fuel tanks in the port, I mean, our, you know, our economy depends on it, and it seems like we're just opening the door for a lot of public outcry over something that we clearly need. Anyway, I guess my question is, what would, what's the upside?
Go ahead, Mr. Spring.
Yeah, well, there may be some public outcry. This has a long history with Government Hill. This isn't like a brand-new issue for them. It's, this has been going on for 20 years or more, as far as I know, where Government Hill has been having, they've been concerned about the hazard of fuel tanks there. And whether or not that's valid or not, I don't know. There used to be air pollution issues, which I think they've cleared up, but I don't know for certain. Benzene is the big one, and they've shown that in the past that there's been quite a bit of, when they monitor the area, there's a lot of benzene there. So it seems like, given the fact that there's a history of concern by the Government Hill people, they should have an opportunity to testify, even though, as you say, it might stir up the pot a little bit. But I think it's, it might be important for them to be able to express their concerns. And we might build, make some improvements if there's a conditional use to the conditions of approval or whatever.
Mr. Strite.
Yes, thank you. My comment is based on the type of information that's being provided. We're not being asked to vote, we're not being asked to comment, per se, so that's become secondary. And so when Mr. Spring said that he's not willing to vote on this, we're, we're not being asked to vote. So if we're going to add a comment that goes up to the Assembly with this information-only packet that's been presented to us, that is probably where any of the further comments on this item should lie. Otherwise, as it stated, this is information-only.
That's right. And so, like I said before, the motion is simply, staff's still bringing this information item in front of us, which means while we don't have a full-blown process, we don't have a public hearing, you know, we don't have all the notices that precede the public hearing, we still have an opportunity as a planning commission to comment on it. But it's not, not in any formal capacity, but to just, and that's what the motion on the table sort of indicates. For example, if the body felt strongly that it, it was, in fact, not an unintended consequence, I would fully expect this body to weigh in on it and to say that. Right? So we didn't have, we don't have to. Mr. Walker can pull his, his motion, but, but I'm, I'm inclined to, to, to call the question, I would just simply say that I'm going to support it. And I would also say that, hearing Mr. McLaughlin's testimony, that he intends to go to the, the community council, and that the community council will be able to also, and members of the public will be able to testify at a public hearing in front of the Assembly as well.
And that is something that we'd encourage by comment to the Assembly.
Well, I think we're, it is not a, it's not a, it's not a question, right? An ordinance will be, will have a public hearing at the Assembly, correct?
Yeah, it'll be introduced at the end of this month, on April 24, and then the public hearing is likely to be scheduled for May 23.
Are, are we taking odds on whether or not they kick it back to us?
Well, I think, I think, you know, we'll see, we'll see what, what happens, but I think at this point, please vote on the motion in front of you. Thank you for the opportunity, Mr. McLaughlin, to, to comment on the technical amendment. Next up is the consent agenda, there's one resolution. Any objection? Can we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Thank you, Mr. Strite, seconded by Ms. Barker. Any objection to approving the resolution before us?
I just, I think I need to abstain, I wasn't here last week.
Yeah, whenever you all have an abstention related to the consent agenda, it'll, you, did you have that? Or you didn't have that?
I just, I, I didn't think to mention it in disclosure.
So we'll, because you were not here? Is that why? Okay, we'll double-check it. Otherwise, those that were present, any, any objection? Hearing none, that resolution is approved. Thanks, Tom, you can, you can, you can leave now. I'm sure, we won't think you're rude by getting up and leaving at this point. All right, next up, case 2016-127, land use plan map. Motion by Mr. Strite to move into the committee of the whole, seconded by Mr. Spohays. Any objection? Hearing none, consider us in the committee of the whole. First order of business, and, and I do think we have, so we have one, two, three, four, five items that are not underlined, 2J, 8C, 8I, 8R, and 11H. Does anyone wish to pull the items that staff considers to be more minor? Do you need a second to go through those, or has everyone looked at them? Good? Mr. Davis?
Yes, staff would like to address a correction to 11H, number two addendum, it was not underlined. Thank you.
You're saying you have a change to your, your change is just underlining it, or your change is substantive in what you've recommended? Because we're still going to ask whether or not we even want to pull the underlined ones, but is, you have a change from what we have?
We have a correction to the response, as information including in your supplemental packet, so we would prefer the commission bring it up.
To clarify, okay.
Thanks.
So other than 11H, any, any interest in, in hearing about 2J, 8C, 8I, or 8R? Okay, hearing none, we will consider those concurrents with staff's recommendation. Next up, please take a look at the underlined items. Should we go down the line, or shall I just go one by one and people can tell me if they'd like to pull them? 5B, yes or no? 5C, I would like pulled? No on 5D. I'd like to understand the action checklist a little bit more. 8B, you have 8B, you have 8B supplement number one and 8B supplement number two, so you have quite a bit related to the area-wide rezoning. Can I get someone to go with me, as I'm not the only one pulling items here, but just to suggest that it's kind of a big issue? Can we, so we're going to hear from 8B? 10I?
Yes, I may pull that one, I'd like a little bit more staff explanation to understand it better.
Okay, 10I. Am I, and if, tell me to slow down, if people need me to slow down, if you didn't note them ahead of time. And 13L? Mr. Davis? We're trying to be, you know, get through this thing, what do you got?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I also have a correction to 8B.
8B, we, 8B we pulled.
I'm sorry, 5B.
On the recommendations or on the analysis?
On the recommendations.
Back to 13K or 13L? Anyone else? Okay, so what I have is 5B, 5C, 8A, 8B, 10I, and 10H, six items. Sound good? Okay. All right, we will consider the, the rest of those items to be concurrents with staff recommendation. If you would, just start off, since, since we didn't initially pull 5B, if you could start with what your correction is on that one.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. On page 98, at the very bottom of your main table, is a recommendation that the density unit, density range for dwelling units in the highest-density residential land use classification be 20 to 80 units per gross acre. We had meant for that to be 15 to 80 units per gross acre, primarily because we forecast that significant number of the areas designated this way will remain between 15 and 20 dwelling units per acre. 15 is simply more realistic. It also makes more sense with the latter part of the sentence that we've recommended to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Spring?
Yeah, so what's the significance of these densities in terms of legal requirements? I mean, aren't these just kind of guidelines, anyway? I mean, it's a zoning district that drives all the density maximums, right? And why, why are we so wrapped around the axle on this, these dense, this density issue?
Well, we hope to remain moving forward and to, to, these are simply to provide more realistic density ranges in the plan, and, yes, that's correct. Title 21, it's allowed density standards are what determine site-specific development.
I mean, so changing it doesn't really affect anything, really?
It could in discretionary land use decisions, rezonings and other, and other decisions. However, for most development, it's Title 21 that'll determine the densities. This provides us with a, with a more realistic guide to what we expect to receive from these. And while the, while the issue response is quite long, it's just our way of documenting our analysis. It's a relatively simple question, it's a minor part of the plan, but it just took a lot of analysis to provide you all with realistic density ranges.
Mr. Chair, I'm just trying to figure out what the, what we're doing here, if we approve this, but, so on page 98, you got... but, so on page 98, you got Recommendation 2, you change from compact-mixed residential low land use, from 8 to 15 to 5 to 15, right? So, if somebody comes in with a development proposal, that's under the old one, under 8, would you allow that, or that would still be allowed?
It would still be allowed. These don't impact what lots, what properties already entitled to, under zoning, to build what they, so that people could build to lower than this. This is gross neighborhood densities, it's intended to be averages over entire neighborhood. It's entirely different from what's required lot per lot.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Strike?
Yes, thank you, and to the Chair. I was having a conversation with some planners in other cities, and we talked about density issues, and one of the unintended consequences they faced with was the topography on when they would go ahead and identify a maximum density, yet it all looked good on flat-on-paper, on flat ground. You throw in hills and valleys, and the topography, and now all of a sudden, one of their unintended consequences was in areas that they looked like they were building right on top of each other, yet compliant with the X-density per acre. How do we compensate or address that type issue? And I don't think that's just here, but in other cases as well. These were dealing with small homes, where they were looking at trying to increase their density by putting pocket homes, these trailer homes, or whatever these are called, and all of a sudden, their density was, people were flocking to unsuitable land, zoned correctly, and all of a sudden, they've got a hodgepodge, and it looked like a tent sitting there, well, whoop, unintended consequence here.
Yes, well, these density ranges are for neighborhood-wide, and one of the reasons why they are recommended to be such a wide range between the low and high is to take into account a variety of situations for neighborhood, whether topography, soils, or what have you. But the main thing about these are, these are not the Title 21 requirements, these are different neighborhood-wide general estimates. Title 21 does have maximum, basically has maximum-allowed densities, and for these three areas, and you can find those back on page 93. At the top of 93, there's a table, and in the far-right column, you see the maximum-allowed dwelling units per acre by zoning, and that's generally what the top-in they can allow. And for some of the very reasons you've mentioned, you can see in the previous two columns, to the left of that, what's actually been attained in those districts for density, and you can see it's far lower. Sometimes it's topography, sometimes it's the development standards, sometimes it's just the market. And so, this table is about the maximum density allowed by zoning on a lot. What these recommendations for this sections are about is something very different, it's the likely future density ranges for an overall neighborhood, it's the gross density for the overall neighborhood. So, instead of being for an individual lot, it takes into account there's streets, there's little parks, there's other uses, there's the childcare center, there's the church on the corner, take all that, the gross density of the neighborhood, and what's the overall area, how many dwelling units are in that overall area? And we care about that from a providing enough housing citywide, and that's what these planned density ranges are, and they provide...
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions related to item 5B? Any objection to staff's recommendations? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to 5C, and since I asked for this, I'm going to just start off with my comment, and then maybe, Mr. Davis, you can respond to it, or other Commissioners can respond to it. I had the opportunity last week to both meet with and tour a number of sites in Anchorage with members from a variety of different cities that were participating in the Rose Center Partners, the Rose Center for Public Leadership. It's an organization that's made up of representatives from the National League of Cities, as well as the Urban Land Institute, and really a cross-section of people from different places, as well as different areas of expertise. And I wanted to comment that as we drove, and I was able to sort of tour with them a couple places around town, and one of the comments that they asked is why, they would say, why is that building, you know, a certain height? Why is that height in that particular neighborhood? And they particularly questioned when they saw buildings of 3 stories in height, right? And in fact, I think what you all were trying to do was recognize why, in fact, from a development standpoint, when you go from 3 to 4 stories, it makes a great deal of sense. In fact, you've already, you're still in wood construction, you still have the same elevator, you still have a lot of the same site costs, so in fact, it's a no-brainer in a lot of places to move from 3 to 4 stories. It may not make as much sense to go from 4 to 5, right? Or 5 to 6, because you go to a different building type. And so, their comment to me, not even knowing that this was in front of us, was, you know, it's a no-brainer, if you're trying to encourage transit, if you're trying to encourage smart density, to at least allow 4 stories. And their comment was within the B3, which we've now, you know, reduced, I know this particular issue is not about the B3, this is about residential areas around commercial town centers and transit areas, I think. But I know from my standpoint, as someone that works in development, while I know a tall building can impact neighborhoods, I will tell you that the lowering from 4 to 3 stories absolutely can impact the feasibility of a development. So, with that, I'd be inclined, actually, to keep some of the original language, unless you can convince me otherwise. Mr. Spring, you want to comment first, before you hear from staff?
Totally support that, that's what I was going to, I was going to ask for a motion, and just keep, make no changes except for the accessory unit wording, which seems to be, you know, doesn't seem to harm anything, it seems to be beneficial, so.
Right.
I agree with you.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, we recommend retaining the 4-story provision, and there it's at the top of page 102, and there, that piece, we recommend retaining. I'm not sure if you want to check over the specific language about compatibility, but that is recommended to stay.
How do you define a larger site? And how do you define a public process? If it's otherwise, so you're suggesting that it likely is a site that doesn't allow, in the zoning code, the height, so it restricts it? I mean, I just, I don't know what that means, I don't know what sort of guidance that means, whereas there's other text that basically says, we will look at allowing higher density in these areas where we'd like to see the density.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I think that we address lot size best in the second line, and the phrase "on larger sites" is redundant and could be deleted. It's left open-ended, that the provisions for 4-story structure would be decided through the public process, that would be the typical Title 21 amendment process.
Okay, so your comment is basically, we're really not changing anything. What exactly, then, are we changing with that, with the allowance, with that language that stays in there? In these other areas of the code, and the action statements, and all that?
In a sense, that's, it's true that all the provisions for, all the actions that amend the code to allow more compact housing, to allow housing, still remain in the plan. And with this bullet, 4-story buildings, they remain in the plan. And there are plenty provisions throughout this plan, all over it, about providing for more compact housing, and actions, you know, 44, 46, 47, 48, in the back of the plan, are all about allowing for more compact housing. The bullets of concern to the residents, and this one pair of bullets on pages 28 and 29 garnered more comment for more people than any other section of the plan. The bullets are confusing. Folks read into them that the, things that weren't intended, they are placed in a, and what we've acknowledged is a somewhat confusing location, per our written response. They are located in the character description for the compact-mixed residential low and compact-mixed residential medium. Compact-mixed residential low in the middle column on page 28, compact-mixed residential medium on page 29. And they aren't necessary in order to get the density in compact housing. What they do do is stir up a lot of concern by the residents. We just finished talking about density ranges, and the place where the plan is intended to provide for housing density is under the density subsection. And the density subsection on page 28 is right below character, and on 29 is right after the character for the other land use designation. So, those density ranges already provide far in excess of how much density exists today. For example, in South Edition, gross density today is 6, in most of South Edition, and their land use designation, even under low, gets up to 15. So, the idea of adding more density in the character is totally redundant.
No, I'm not suggesting that we conflict with the density ranges. I'm actually suggesting that you're being unrealistic, that without allowing height, you're not necessarily allowing feasibility. So, you're just, it's wishful thinking. I got a couple people in the queue, and then we'll see where the rest of the group wants to go.
Just a point of information, we are still allowing for increased height in the plan.
Ms. Barker, then Ms. Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I found the language, the substitute language at the top of 102 to be confusing, and I think it can be confusing to the public, because I may try to read through it a couple, 3 times to get away from the notion that it sounds like what we're attempting to do here is impose additional public process, when in fact, I think that's not really what it says, I think what it really says is, the language that you're trying to replace, I think you're trying to elaborate it to a point where it becomes a little more confusing. Now, the original language indicates that, you know, it'd be subject to additional compatibility criteria, and what I'm understanding you to say at the top of 102 is to kind of elaborate a little bit more about how those additional criteria come about, and what they relate to. So, for the sake of clarity, and I think for the reasons that Chair Robinson has described, I would prefer that we go back to what the original language is. I just think it's a lot more clear that in the interest of trying to improve on density and more middle, missing middle housing, that we're going to endorse, you know, going to a 4-story format as a way to increase density without increasing footprint.
Thank you, Ms. Barker. Danielle, were you in and out? No, you?
I'm still in.
You're back in, I don't know how John jumped you, but I'm going to go to Ms. Bailey.
I also agree with Commissioner Barker, what she had to say. This was one that kind of confused me, and I think I might be more confused, it sounds like there's still a desire to allow height based on what the staff is saying, but the language changes don't seem to, at least to how I'm reading it, make that same correlation to what you're saying, so I think the original language makes more sense. Also, I think allowing that additional height within the quarter-mile walk into some town centers and city centers is a good idea, because there is just not that much land within the Anchorage Bowl that can be developed, and at a certain point, we have to develop up. And I think that the way it was originally worded made that a lot more clear, and these amendments kind of confused the issue for me, at least, and so if it's confusing for me, I'm wondering how everyone else is going to interpret it.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. So, your comment, I think Ms. Barker's comments were specifically to number 4 and the recommendation, do you have any thoughts on 5 and 6 as well? Sort of get at the same thing, but take out any, they sort of take out the, may include increased height or allowed units, I mean, I think it's trying to get there, but just...
So, specifically to 5, I think, keeping the additional story, but I like how it did consider other things like scale, design, lock coverage, setbacks, I think it was good that it added those things, I just didn't like that it deleted that additional story requirement in 5, and then, I believe I was fine with how 6 was worded. But my main concern was with item number 4.
So, if I could, then, to move us along, if I could see if, engage the Commission to basically agree with staff's recommendations, 1, 2, 3, for 4, retain the original language, and for 5, don't cross out an additional story, and 6, as is. That sound okay? That sound okay, Ms. Barker?
Mm-hmm.
Staff, did you capture that?
No, I did not, could you repeat that, please?
Yeah, so what we're going to say is 1, 2, 3, and 6, as is, number 4, to retain original language, and number 5, to not scratch out or an additional story. Mr. Spring?
I asked for clarification on number 6, are we just dropping that entirely?
No, I was, we were going to keep it unless you had a suggestion for that as well.
So, nobody's picked an op, what option there?
Oh, I got you, it's an option A or option B, you got one?
I think we should drop that one, too, because it is contradictory, I disagree with staff that, he says that it doesn't, these changes don't reduce the height, but if I was looking back at this, I'd say, well, all these items here, you're saying you actually struck out the height, and I'd have to say that that was the intent of the legislative body, was to not allow the height to be allowed there. And this one, I think, is similar to the other ones, we could just go with the original language in Action 44.
So, let's go back, so just to be clear, 1, 2, 3, as is, 4, to retain original language, 5, to retain or an additional story, is there any disagreement with those changes? None with those. Mr. Strike, then I'll go to 6 after that, just...
I was just going to go back to the original scratched-out language, and not even include the new language.
Good.
We were promoting the 4-story structures.
Go back to the bottom of page 101. It says it more simply, you good with that? I mean, it's just clearer. So, 1 through 5, any objection? Hearing none, that's our recommendation. Number 6, you're right, Mr. Spring, I forgot there's kind of an option, so we really need to take this up, you're saying your preference is option A?
My preference is retain Strategy 44 and Table 4, these 2 options would replace them, either amend it or replace it.
So, if we say retain 44 as written previously?
Yes, and 44 originally as written says, "may include increased height," and which I think is the intent of what we've been talking about, was to keep that wording in there.
Why is it an either-or if 1 has to do with 44 and 1 has to do with 48? Can you just, can... Oh, option A is to delete 44 and replace it. Oh, option A is to delete 4-4 and replace it?
Yes.
And option B is to keep it?
With the amended 4A.
I gotcha. So your recommendation is to keep option B, 4-4 with, get rid of the strike language and to add the new language that staff's put in there or to keep it as was written?
I think that's excellent idea. Delete the strike language and keep the new language.
So is there any objection to, on number six, going with option B, deleting the strike language but keeping the new language? Greg, you got something?
I was looking at option A.
What's that?
I was looking at the staff's option A.
You prefer option A? You wanna speak to it?
No, but I wanna hear John's...
Hear John's rationale again on B. I mean, I thought that the staff detuned their option, you know, amend title one, title 21 to ease the restrictions that currently deter. It doesn't say eliminate, doesn't say minimize, it doesn't say eliminate. It's, you know, it's to allow this ultimately to move forward.
I mean, yeah, it sounds good, but it just, it does make a change in the intent of the plan in that it specifically drops strategy 4-4, which says, "may include increased height," and replaces it with the amended 4-8, which has no mention whatsoever of increased height. So in my opinion, that means we don't agree with increased height. So that's why...
We don't take care of the height in number four? No correlation?
I don't see anything about height in option A, which in the description under action 4A.
Well, the fact...
4-8, sorry.
The fact that there is nothing mentioned in it doesn't negate it though either.
So just to move it along, I mean, you could, and we're not gonna do this to every one of these, I recognize, but you could just say, under 4-8, amend title 21 to ease restrictions that currently deter construction of compact housing types. No, compact housing types are different than a four-story structure, right? Mr. Davis?
Yes, we could, we could either do something to 4-8 to be more inclusive of three- and four-story apartment buildings and address it that way. What we liked about the option A is that it, it's really, 4-4 and 4-8 aren't likely to necessarily be separate actions. And there's so much overlap that we, we see them as one. We also, looking at the map, noticed that, just focusing on R2M and R3 and just near centers, is actually limiting. There are areas beaten more than a quarter-mile away from a center in R3 that might be on a high-frequency transit corridor. And so we realized that those distances are rather arbitrary. So we, we wanted to focus on 4-8. We prefer option A. If the commission were to choose to go with option B, we would also request the commission go ahead and still make those text amendments to action 4-8. Because after further discussions with the OECD and with folks in Housing Anchorage, action 4-8 is actually quite improved in its own language in option A. Thank you.
Is there any objection to keeping both a 4-8 and 4-4? While there is overlap, I can hardly see the major issue.
I like the original 4-4.
John, get us out of here.
Yeah, I agree, 4-4, I would move if we were moving things. Keep 4-4 as it is, but make the changes that the staff requests for 4-8 since they feel it makes an improvement and clarification.
So move 4-4 and then, and then deleting the striked language, correct? On 4-4, right?
That'll be fine.
That was the point.
Or keep the 4-4 the way it is now, which is what I think Commissioner...
Ms. Bailey, tell us how to get out of this.
So my notes for this is if we went with option B, was to keep the strikeout language, but otherwise, I'm fine. And so I would like to keep the strikeout language of 4-4.
Okay.
But otherwise, add both the amendments to 4-8 and 4-4.
That sounds good. Any objection to removing the strikeout language of 4-4 but keeping the amended language on 4-4 and 4-8? Any objection to that? Okay, hearing none.
Thank you.
That's our recommendation. That was what, five C? Now, just, I know we didn't select five D. Just to clarify, you all laid something on the table, but it didn't affect the recommendations, right? It just filled in some language in yellow as I quickly glanced at it. Just wanna make sure we're not missing something else. The recommendations stayed the same on, for the...
Five D.
For five D.
Yes, the recommendations remain the same.
Next up was eight A, and this has to do with really kind of an implementation chart, I believe. If, if Mr. Davis, if you can walk us through it a little bit, I needed some, is this, have we changed something related to the workflow summary? We've added this table, is that what we're doing?
Yes, this table shows the numbers of the action items that appear in the actions checklist chart for the now and one-to-three-year timeframe. So everything in the actions checklist chart in section three at the back of the plan that has a now or within one-to-three-year timeframe appears right here on this one-page table. This table is our response to concerns raised by a number of folks about the number of action items, how are we going to actually get them all done, and what's really going to be the flow and what are the priorities. When we bring this back, this table, this chart, we will accompany it with a list of the changes to some of the timeframes of the action items. Also, the commission over the past 10 or so meetings has approved a number of additions and changes to the action items. So we'll be bringing that all back to you as a whole so that you can see these changes. So for example, action 3-1, it's in the third row, under 2017, under the now actions, third row, it's a change to title 21 mixed-use commercial industrial standards, 3-1. That's actually, that was gonna be a one-to-three-year item, but through this issue response, we are pushing it up to be a now item. And that is a fix to the mixed-use development standards in title 21. So coming out of the chute, that's a front-burner item now, whereas before it was a one-to-three-year item. Some of the numbers here are still in flux and they, you'll find they don't correspond to what's in the public hearing draft, but they do correspond to the track changes occurring to the plan as a result of this, of the work you're doing. And this also shows who does what, and it just gives the public a better idea of what we expect to happen. One of the most important things about this table is that it is calibrated to our staff resources. We have gone to the exercise of doing an initial first-pass estimate of the amount of staff resources each of these items will take. And they are matched up so that the items at this table take up a bit less than half of your planning staff resources for any given year. And so what we are also trying to respond to is concerns, can we actually do this based on existing resources? The caveat is at the bottom of the table, timing is to be viewed as flexible depending on a number of factors, but based on our initial pass, this would be a workflow plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey.
I just had a question. Is there a reason that items 7-1, 9-1, and 10-1 are all clustered together?
Bowling balls.
Yeah, right. If you hit them all at once, they all go into the hole. So this is all the, these three action items are all wrapped up in the airport rezoning. So you'll find that 9-1, 7-1, 10-1 all have to do with that, that one action to create a new airport management district.
And are there any other items that are also likewise implemented? It's just, it just seemed weird to me that only one was, that one area had to all be done at the same time, whereas nowhere else is that seen.
There are a couple items that do go together, not quite so tight, but those aren't quite yet shown here. And I think we intended to group 4-8, 4-4, and possibly 4-1 together, both the old and new 4-1s together, all there in the second row, they're supposed to happen kind of concurrently.
Yeah, my suggestion would just be to be consistent. If you're gonna group some, then group all the ones that you wanna group. If not, don't group any.
Okay, thank you.
Minor nitpicky thing.
Yep, thanks, Ms. Bailey. And also, I assume it's intentional to have some of these straddling the line too, right?
That's right. 7-4 is a big one, and we couldn't get it all done in 2018. Yeah, thank you.
You started. Okay, so what we're doing is just sort of saying, hey, this format works, go with the format. We will review the actual final proposed action checklist at final adoption. Yep?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, any objection to the staff's proposed format, other than the comments provided by Ms. Bailey? Okay, hearing none. We did ask for eight B, which is really about rezonings, targeted rezonings. Mr. Davis, I think we've all, we've all read the, you know, kind of the analysis of how you, you know, kind of got down, down, down. Could you give us really, you know, shorthand, maybe including how the supplement number one, that chart, you know, how that factors into the criteria and where we come up with the final list exactly and how that, how that works?
So, Mr. Chair, John Cecil for staff and to the commission. So AB supplement one, attempted to visually identify the prioritization of those targeted area rezones. And so at the very top, you'll see that there's three, basically, well, let me back up a little bit. So we went through an exhaustive process, and there's some maps here tonight, all the way over to the right, that identify about 250 potential targeted area rezones. I think that's the correct number. So, you know, there were some stakeholders that suggested that the department consider area-wide rezones for the entire ball. And that was done, I guess, before my time here in the 1970s, and that took approximately a decade, as I understand it. We've decided to, as the term says, targeted area rezones, we've decided to try to be a little bit more strategic this time, recognizing that there's limited resources to pull off project to that scope. And so we've really tried to identify, out of the chute here, as Tom was saying, what the three highest priorities would be. And so those, I know it might be a little bit hard to see on that table, but that includes the Middle Spinnard, midtown area, the Abbott Town Center, and the South Sea Street. And then below that, there's several others that we think are also worthy of consideration. So, but we needed to find some documentation or support for those. And so we developed criteria to evaluate those, and that helped us determine which ones we need to do first. So maybe at that point, I'll stop and see if you have any questions.
So is the goal that you really would have a kind of a final list in the plan that orders them or just at least groups them? And then you would show others that kind of fell out of the top areas, but some language on how they would, over the course of the plan implementation period, somersault into a higher priority area?
Yeah, and Mr. Chair, Commissioners, so part of that exercise was also trying to determine realistically how many of these staff could undertake. And so we consulted with the current planning division as well. And it was thought at the beginning of this that three was probably a realistic number to try and take on. Now, if we can get through these faster than we originally anticipated, then we can probably do more. But I think, you know, we wanted to kind of set the expectations maybe on the low side so that we could pull these off. But there's also a number of others that, as you can see from that list, that we would like to do as well. And these, I might also add that these do include multiple properties. So where there were targeted area rezones with just one property owner, we did not consider those as a top priority at this point. It was multiple property owners, multiple properties.
So I guess the one comment that I would add, and hopefully we're gonna see a little more just emphasis on implementation, you know, one of the roles that the Planning Commission, I think, has is to not approve, but review the annual planning department work plan. I mean, I think that's established in the code itself.
Correct.
Is it, you know, just sort of a, I mean, to me, it would make sense that, you know, on an annual basis, you would look at which of these ought to go forward in the following year, and that might be something that you bring forward and have a conversation with us at a work session and just, you know, so, you know, maybe, maybe we've drifted away from a certain part of town or there's a greater opportunity site, and people here might have good perspective on that. I mean, that would be the type of collaboration that I think would be, would be good.
Yeah, I, speaking for myself, I think we agree. Staff agrees with that, yes.
So maybe, maybe some just language somewhere that this, this isn't the list that's gonna stay the list forever, that there'd be some annual, you know, evaluation of how...
Review, evaluation.
Exactly, something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, that's, I guess that'd be my comment. Anyone else have comments on the area-wide rezonings? Okay, I get, that gets us to the, thank you, Mr. Cecil, that gets us to the final column, I believe. I think Mr. Spring maybe had, we had 10I followed by 11H at staff's request. So 10I, which is on page 159, and is related to map 10I. How about that?
Through the Chair, Commissioners, the Tobis staff, in your additional addenda packet, there's a memo, second to the last page, that has a correction to the text. I'm not sure if it appeared in your packet or not. Is that in there, table? This thing? Yeah, Tom confirmed it should be in your packet. So this area is, is a transition, part of it is a transition area, originally shown in the Spinnard Development... in the Spinnard Development Corridor study from 1984, and then followed, more or less, by the West Anchorage District Plan Land Use Map. It's east of the railroad and north of Spinnard Road. The Spinnard plan in 1984 showed some of this area as expanding the commercial, and also calling some of it sort of a transitional zone towards 36th, and they had recommended possibly, like, an RO use. We, the original draft plan showed this area as residential with a stipple on it, to sort of reflect that general sentiment, and we've gone in and fine-tuned it to some degree. From, so this represents a slight change from the draft plan. And I, so what we've done is we've added commercial or the Main Street Corridor on the east, the southeast corner, depicted on your map as pink with the lines through it. It's on the west flank of Wyoming. And we've also come up with one additional change, it's not on your map, and we'll send that change to you on a revised map, but the lot in the southwesternmost corner, it's a single lot, on the east side of Lois, one lot in from Spinnard Road, we're also recommending that go to Main Street Corridor. The rest of it, we're leaving as a residential, because that reflects the proper pattern, and that seems to be the intent of the community, who has a lot of concern about commercial traffic in that area. So that's the changes from the draft.
Okay, so the, the text has changed slightly.
Very slightly, yeah.
From what we had in our packet. Mr. Spring?
So we say, originally it was a Main Street Corridor, removing that designation, because that implies that it would be commercial?
Actually, it was commercial, the Spinnard Corridor Plan in 84, if you recall, that plan had distinct commercial uses on the frontage of Spinnard, but they had different recommendations for the back areas beyond the frontage. And in this case, it had recommended part, expansion of the B3, as well as this transitional idea of an RO between the Spinnard Road and 36th.
And through the Chair, now it just reverts back to the, what's more consistent with the zoning and the land use?
Minor changes we recommend, but it's essentially consistent with the zoning.
Okay, anyone else with questions? Any objection to staff's recommendation? Okay, hearing none. Last item, I think, 11H, number 2, addendum. And Mr. Davis, you asked that, that we pulled this one?
Yes, in your supplementary packet, you'll find a correction to 11H, number 2, yeah, very last page, your supplemental. These are just corrections to the, to the analysis. I had apparently slipped in an early draft of the analysis, and didn't slip in the copy-paste the final version in, so these track changes reflect the, the more final staff analysis, and correct some mistakes. No changes to the recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. I'm not going to fall on my sword for that one, but I, I just, I find the, the contradiction, you know, last, last week, we talked about looking at, you know, church and other sites that might be, you know, might have a likelihood for, for housing, and I know from talking to the congregation there, they, they have a strong desire to, at some point, have senior housing, which, which you can't do in an R2M type, you know, I mean, you could do it as townhouses, but the typical thought for, for senior housing is that it be allowed to be elevated, I mean, even if it's a 20-unit or 30-unit, having it be multifamily. So I, I don't care, I'm just trying to do a little work to say, it's a good, it's a good site for a small multifamily building, that would be consistent with the property owner, but I'm, I'm going to let that one go. Is there any, any other issues on 11H, Addendum 2? Okay, hearing none. Can I get a motion to come out of the committee of the whole? Thank you, Mr. Strike, seconded by Mr. Walker. There had been some discussion of an additional meeting in, in April, I don't believe that that occurred, so I think our next meeting is the, is the first May meeting, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And, Mr. Spring and Ms. Bailey, are you in the queue for, yep, before we, okay, go ahead, Ms. Bailey.
Just as a suggestion for the next time, my, I'm still working off the old, the original copy of the 2040 Land Use Plan, and at this point, we've made so many changes and amendments to it, that it's hard for me, for this to be worthwhile. So if the next time we come with a new batch, I think it might be helpful to get an updated version with those changes that we have incorporated, that way it can be a better resource tool. Yeah, this is the most recent, unless there are other people are...
I have September 2016, yeah.
So I was kind of...
You're assuming that that document is, is available?
Yes, I'm just saying it would be, like, in, in the future, because now I'm trying to correlate and go back, and it's hard for me to...
We haven't made real votes yet.
So, so I, I, Tom, why don't you try? I mean, I think I know where, where you all are, but what is the expectation of, of what we would have to review for, you know, final deliberations versus, I think, what, what we know is necessary once it gets to the Assembly, to really have a clear, clear document? But is your, is, do you even have the ability to do what Ms. Bailey has, has asked for? It's okay to say you don't. You can't.
We're, we're working on it. I don't know the timeframe from when we'll complete it. It would, it would be, it wouldn't look quite like that plan, there, it'd be a track change monster, but it, 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 we'll, we'll do our best. We're, we're thinking along the same lines.
Is your expect, do you think we'll have it before our final deliberations?
That, you know, assuming that's May 8th, we'll go back and talk about it.
Okay.
No, thanks.
So, so our plan is to, I was about ready to ask for a motion to postpone to May 1. Do you have, do you have items for us to deal with on May 1?
Yes, we will. We are targeting to get those to you either the 21st or no later than the 25th. Getting to you the 21st will give you two weekends, the 25th will give you about a week. So that, that would be the remaining 30 or so items that haven't been dealt with.
Okay, so motion to postpone to May 1. Can I have that motion? Motion to postpone, Ms. Bailey, seconded by Mr. Walker. Any objections? Hearing none, we will have the land use plan met likely on May 1, and then we will see about being ready to go May 8th, although I would say that's a very quick turnaround. Mr. Walker, is that a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn, seconded by Ms. Bailey. Any objections? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned.